Mayor Hess, we are ready to go when you are.
Thank you, Ms. Raybiden. Good evening. I will call the Missoula City Council meeting to order if you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. So our first item of business as always is roll call, and I don't have access to our online participants this evening yet, and so Ms. Raybiden, could you please call the roll for us?
I'd be happy to. Anderson. Anderson is absent. Vissera.
Present.
Present.
Ms. Raybiden, your audio is...
Is it terrible?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, that should be better. Kontos.
Here.
Farmer.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Jordan.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
Vaseka.
Present.
And West.
Present.
Okay, it looks like we have 11 council members present with Anderson absent.
Thank you, Ms. Raybiden. We have, it looks like we don't have minutes to approve tonight. We have our next item of business, I actually have a couple of announcements before we, before we move on. There's going to be a couple of changes to our agenda, and I suspect some people might be here to comment on some of those agenda items. So there is an item that was heard in committee last week regarding a proposed music festival at Playfair Park. The applicant for that project has pulled the proposal, and that is not on our agenda tonight, so that is not up for consideration. So I wanted to announce that if you are here for that item, it's not, it's not something that is before the body tonight. So save you a little time if you, if you want to, you're welcome to stay, of course, but if you don't, you're welcome to, to sneak out. And secondly, we're going to be having, we're going to have a change to the committee schedule, and that is the item that is the urban camping ordinance, that is going to be postponed for consideration at a later, at a later time, so we won't be scheduling that tonight, and no action item on that as well. So wanted to get that out there before public comment. We'll take public comment on non-agenda items. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda, and, and... And we're going to have to remind these two that this is, we keep it respectful, we keep it to three minutes or less, please.
Shut the hell up, Jordan. I'm talking now, man.
Commissioner. Commissioner, the floor is yours.
So Dave and I are here on the, on the, on behalf of our colleague Juan, for, for those who don't know, we're your three county commissioners, and we really wanted to, Dave will speak his piece too, but just wanted to come and say thanks, Jordan, you've been such a fantastic partner, set a great tone for cooperation. We're going to miss you. You've also set us up really well to work with the next administration, and we're just appreciative of everything you've done, and how kind you've been to us, and the doors we've always felt and actually been open.
Thank you.
And I'm Dave Strohmeyer, one of the three county commissioners, as Josh mentioned. Since I left office as a city council member, I have tried my best not to show up here again. I'm not asking any of you for anything tonight, but like Josh, first, I just want to thank all of you for your service. This is not an easy job that you guys do day in and week in and week out. And for those of you who will be leaving office at the end of this year, thank you for the years of service you've put in, and whatever may come next, best of luck, but especially thank you, Jordan, for stepping up, serving as Missoula's mayor. The past few years have been tumultuous at, at best, as we've navigated our way through global pandemics and all of the aftermath of that, the loss of our long-term friend in Mayor John Engin. There was a time in the not-too-distant past where Pine Street was an insurmountable chasm between the city and the county, and I'm glad to say that is no more, and that is certainly largely a result of, of the leadership of former Mayor Engin and your leadership, Jordan. So thank you for your service, and I know Missoula's future will be bright, and your future will be bright as you continue to give back to our community. So thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Commissioner Strohmeyer is responsible for getting the end of this line of work as well, so thank you, thank you for that.
Hey, greetings. I am Kevin Miltko, M-I-L-T-K-O. I live in Ward Four, just a few blocks from Playfair Park. I know you guys voted on this on Wednesday, and it's been pulled from the agenda, so I'm speaking to it now. During your committee meeting, someone said that, you know, if we got a couple hundred signatures about this proposal, that, that would be helpful for you. This was, I've canvassed for a lot of issues, and for a lot of candidates, this was the easiest issue I have ever canvassed on. People are so opposed to a concert in Playfair Park. We stopped canvassing when we heard on Friday that he had pulled his proposal. You know, we didn't really even start having until Thursday. I can tell you, you gave me a month, I can have over 10,000 signatures in opposition to this. People in Ward Three were as irritated as people in Ward Four. This is what they signed. I've got over 500 signatures here, and then I'm going to leave you. "We are opposed to the proposed music festival at Playfair Park. Playfair Park was not designed to be a major concert venue. Please vote to maintain our Playfair Park sports recreational facilities as a place for kids and adults to enjoy and play on the current fields and open space." It was really clear. Anyways, I just wanted to hammer it home. He's a really nice guy. I went to dinner with him last week, the promoter. I know he's going to come back with a counterproposal, so I just, just want you to know what your neighbors and the people you represent think. Mike, you said you'd take this from me. So anyways, it's really clear that people don't like this proposal, but if you went to the fairgrounds or to the, to the football place, everybody said that would be a great place for a concert, just not Playfair Park. Thank you for your service. I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight with general public comment? Mr. Oswald.
I'm Jeffrey Oswald. I live over on Mount Avenue by the Johnson Center. Went there the other day, and, when Food Not Bombs was serving there, and hung out there for a while, and, boy, that's a loud place. I've got like tinnitus, and being in there for a while was kind of painful, but I wanted to hang out with the people there, because I like them. There's a lot of interesting people that live on the street and are currently housed there. I, since it's not on the agenda, then I can certainly mention this, this proposed camping ordinance, and my concern with this is that I was told that it's being written by the city attorney to, to stipulate, or to, to the specifications of insurance carriers. So the insurance carriers are giving dictates on how the city government deals with camping and homelessness in the city, and I think that's, that a commercial enterprise should have that sort of sway when it comes to people's lives and their struggles in life. I don't think that that's really a, a good guide, because there are vested interests that's only concerned with money, and money tends to put humanity in the backseat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight with general public comment? Mr. Moore.
My name's Bob Moore, M-O-O-R-E. I got a surprise in my mail today. I thought I was going to get a tax bill of about, what was it, 9% or something like that? Mine went up 18 point something. I do not appreciate that at all, and Mayor, I won't miss you, to, to your part of helping us get a tax, where my taxes went up 18, call it 18%. I read in the paper taxes were going to go up 9%. Please tell me why my taxes went up 18%, and what are you going to do about it next year when I'm broke? I ask again that you do something about these taxes. Actually, I don't need it, but from what I understand, there's a lot of bad off people in this town, and you should start directing your efforts instead of trying to build a building or pay for whatever. Your objective should be to reduce the taxes in this city. Reduce the taxes in this city. They are way too high. You know they're way too high, and you're spending money like crazy. I have a Marshall Mountain. Oh, God, I hope I get to pay my part of Marshall Mountain. Will you make sure that I get to pay my part of Marshall Mountain? And then somebody told me the Stockman Bank had closed one of their buildings. I wonder if that was the building that you, MRA, gave to them as a welfare check. And are you going to get it back? You should start doing something to straighten out the MRA. It's a disgrace what they're doing, and what you're doing by agreeing to it. You must be agreeing to it, because that's the way it's getting done. It's a real mess. 18% on mine. Whatever to the 9% I read about in, in the paper. So I request that you get the MRA and the role of the city council and the role of the county to relieve the pain certain of our citizens are, are having.
You're coming up on three and a half minutes, Mr. Moore?
Oh, I was waiting for you to tell me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comment? Sir?
Sorry, never did this before. My name's Rick Kaler. I live off just Hillview in the Muscat Gully section, and I'll reiterate what the gentleman said about property taxes, but my comment was just, whether there's any way we can put the lights back on the pedestrian bridge coming north from the college. My wife and I and our friends have been attending events at the college, including the Mansfield Dialogues, and it was very odd to me that it was pitch black walking to where our car was parked, and a number of people on the bridge didn't really feel comfortable with it, particularly in light of all the increase in urban camping there. So I just can't understand why we put all these lights, and it's, it's really pitch black at that point. It's even a tripping hazard. So just, if somebody could look into that. Does anybody know why the lights aren't on at night?
So I wasn't aware of it, but we'll forward it on to our Parks Department that manages those, and we'll, we'll get, we'll get someone to look into it. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Brendan Work. I live here in Missoula. I'm a high school teacher. I taught some of your kids. I also organize with Montanans in solidarity with Palestine. Over the past month, as you may be aware, many hundreds of us have seen horrors unfold as Israel enacts in Gaza one of the worst genocides in the contemporary century. Over 11,000 Palestinians have lost their lives, including 5,000 children. This is seven times more children than Russia has killed in Ukraine in a time span considerably shorter. Against these massacres, we have found that our state and federal governments are indifferent at best and in some cases callous. As you may know, Representative Zinke has introduced a bill to ban Palestinians from the United States. On the other side, Senator Chester has merely said, "It's not a good situation," quote, "and there's no easy answers." Now here, as Missoulians, we are forced to accept that the institutions that decide foreign policy do not represent us, and the institutions that do represent us do not touch foreign policy. I can certainly understand why, upon hearing the words Palestine and Israel, you might simply think, "Not our problem." I fully believe the number-one problems facing this body relate to housing, our environment, and the rising cost of living, but I urge you also to see that your constituents include many Palestinian-Americans who have been targeted by racism such as that of Mr. Zinke, many Jews who object to the conflation of antisemitism and criticism of Israel, and many taxpayers who oppose the $14 billion in military aid the federal government is considering sending to Israel. Missoula's very small portion of that aid redistributed could buy 106 houses, give health care to 410 children, or hire 12 teachers. These numbers come from the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights. I believe this council is made up of decent and understanding people who care about this city and its future, and would not mortgage it away on foreign apartheid. In the past, the city council has passed a referendum on the occupation of Iraq in 2007, and in the 1970s forbade nuclear material from passing through Missoula. We are not as isolated as some people believe, nor is this an unprecedented type of resolution. In fact, one is currently being debated in Seattle, Detroit, and Boston, and a resolution just like this has passed in Providence and Richmond, California. I hope this body will represent us better than our state and federal legislators and consider in the future a resolution of ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional public comment?
Hello, everyone. Andy Helsel, Ward Two. First of all, congrats to those of you who won your reelections and will continue to serve on the council for the coming years. I look forward to seeing you at lots more city council meetings. I'm also here as a part of Montanans for Palestine. I agree with everything that Brendan just said to you, and just want to add to that, that, you know, as Brendan said, I know that, you know, the city council of a little town in Montana, perhaps the voice doesn't mean that much in this issue, but that I think everyone, individuals, organizations, businesses, governmental bodies needs to lend their voice to this issue, and that collectively that voice means more. I would like to see, for example, Senator Tester, who has a great deal of power as the chair of the Appropriations Committee, in sending money and weapons to Israel to hear from cities across Montana as he is hearing from constituents across Montana that we would like a ceasefire. We have more than 700 signatures on a petition that has been delivered to Senator Tester and have been calling his offices every day for a month, more than a month now, and I think that when the city council passes a resolution, when cities across the state do that, and those things are added up, it means something. Again, like Brendan said, passing a resolution like this is not unprecedented, but what is, is what's happening in Gaza and across Palestine. And I would also urge this body to think about what happened right here on this land not that long ago, because what's happening in Palestine might feel like it's really far away, but it's actually what the U.S. government did to indigenous peoples right here. This is not our land. This land belongs to the Salish and Kalispel people, much like Gaza and the West Bank, et cetera, belong to the Palestinian people. So I would also ask you to consider a resolution that asks for a ceasefire in this horrendous situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight with general public comment? Mr. Spitzmacher.
There was a posting in front of 19, 19 North in regards to a, regarding a development applications. What's it all about?
So that's about the, that's about the Johnson Street Shelter, and that's later on in our agenda, and that's just going through the ways in which that meets our zoning code. It doesn't affect the operation of the shelter.
My question is, it's slated to be demolished, and my direct inquisition is, what's unsafe about the facility structurally with those big carrier beams that are laminated, and that supports the roof? I see no leakage. I see no footing damage to that facility. My question is, what would it cost to build a building of that equivalent, and why would you want us to destroy it? As far as the homeless shelters, I see they're very actively managed for how well they can work with the resources they got. Things have changed greatly. Despite some of the staff is still there, their persona seems to be on a different directive in regards to realizing the issues of individuals that create the problems for the ones that are unsafe. And this is what I actually heard from somebody that was there. They're staying at the Johnson Center because they are threatened at the Pavarello. You don't feel threatened at the Johnson Center. Before you think about closing a facility, there are people that stay at the Johnson Center because they feel more equitably safe. I feel comfortable now at the Pavarello compared to what I was through last year of the advocacy program, how we enjoy and appreciate the malicious intent and support it by the staff. Well, regards to the Middle East, Quagmire cesspool that's been created after World War, after World War II, that was probably set in precedent after World War I, and I actually heard somebody that they gave me the actual opportunity to eavesdrop to the specific type of Israelites that are in Israel, out of Germany, and to why the circumstances of World War II had developed after World War I. People do not look at the foundation and the footing and the match that struck the keg. Have a good day.
Any other general public comment tonight?
I'm new to Missoula, and I, I don't know what's on your agenda, but I hope that the ambulance gets to my money. That's all I want to say right now. I have a lot more to say, but I'll catch up. I've been at the Pavarello.
I'm housebound.
Anyone else tonight?
My name is Tolly Sehnum. I stay down at the Johnson Street Pavarello. I have a flatbed trailer that I converted into a bedroom slash storage area. I had it parked around the corner of the Pavarello for about a month or so. City code, code enforcement came and told me that I needed to move it, so I ultimately did. I had told them that the shelter will not, the Johnson Street Shelter will not allow me to park my trailer in the back, in the parking lot. She had then ultimately told me, pull it in there, and if they have a problem, have them call my office, because if you have vehicles or anything to that nature, that's what that entire area is for. So I did that, and now I'm getting threatened with the trailer to be towed and me getting kicked out. Now, they haven't specifically told me that I'm going to get kicked out, but I see the pattern. I've been there. This is my fourth year there, and this is what I'm seeing. I would really like for that not to happen, and I would really like to be left alone. See, when you're homeless, you're supposed to have a kind of an easier life. You should be able to find a place where you can just kind of pop a squat and put your life on autopilot so you can get out of that lifestyle. But here in Missoula, on the other hand, it's a little bit different, because every damn two weeks, you got to move, you got to pack your crap up. Now, most people can't pack your entire house up and move into another house in two weeks, so to expect somebody who has limited resources to do the exact same thing can get a little bit problematic. I've looked through the contract here that the city has between the Pavarello and you guys, and specifically Exhibit A states that the Pavarello's, the contract states that they'll be open, that they're to keep the building open 24/7 for indoor space, and it doesn't... it doesn't speak about enforcement of the parking lot. That's just an assumption. The city responsibilities on Section A here agrees that they're going to include the parking lots, so I would consider that the parking lots at Johnson Street are under the city's jurisdiction and not the Pavarello's. So I would request that my stuff doesn't get towed away and create more of a problem for me, and kind of be left alone. I think three minutes is up?
You're close, but, and we'll chat with our code compliance officer and understand what's going on, and appreciate your comments.
Yes, it's just not me. There's other people out that are having the same problem, too. They're trying to, they're trying to intentionally try to relax there, because that's what this whole place is all about, you know, at least for us. I mean, I understand you guys are trying to, you got a certain fiduciary responsibility behind what you're doing, but most of those people don't pay attention to any of that. They care about their own problems, and I try to instruct them that you guys are trying to balance everything all out, and a lot of times, I'm just blatantly not successful at doing it. So, but when this kind of stuff starts happening to me, I don't like that. So, I just thought I'd bring it to everybody's attention. I really don't want to have to have to deal with these problems.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight with general public comment?
Do you want my name?
I do, if you would.
My name is Jennifer Oliver.
Jennifer Oliver, thank you for, thank you for that. We'll get that into the record. Anyone else tonight? Okay, seeing none in the room and no hands raised online, we can move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybain?
Actually, point where I was going to say first.
Actually, yeah. Lynn Jones has a.
Ms. Jones, go ahead.
Thank you. Before the city clerk reads the committee order, since we have changed the committee schedule, I thought it would be clearer if I explained the change. So Wednesday, in Public Safety and Health, we had an urban camping ordinance scheduled. We're going to be hitting pause on that and continuing it into early 2024, and I'll just talk through the reasons a little bit. Part of the conversation is that the parks ordinance regarding camping in parks that we had an emergency ordinance on last summer that has since lapsed, and we have had that on our schedule several times to address, that is currently scheduled for December 11th, and we will also be continuing that, to hear that at the same time as the urban camping ordinance in early 2024, because the two really are connected and need to be heard together. So I just wanted to briefly address, council has been working on the urban camping ordinance for quite a few months, based on what has unfolded in Missoula for the last year or so with a lot of urban camping. So we've been working on this, but we decided, although we had queued it up to start hearing it, we decided after some really good discussions with new incoming Mayor Andrea Davis, to instead hit pause and hear that in early 2024. And I had some language from her that I just wanted to share in terms of messaging so that everyone understands. She would, the new administration and the transition is happening in the next few weeks, so first of all, there's a lot on everyone's plates, and having the opportunity to review the implications of this ordinance with the city departments, look at the resource and budget demands associated with it, and get input from community stakeholders is a high priority, and having some time to do that as a new elected is valuable. I think, according to Mayor Davis, she wanted to let, she let me know that it is her intention to address this ordinance holistically in the ecosystem of solutions that the city and all of our public and private partners have, that they have implemented, and what they are currently working towards, and she understands that there is a necessity in some form or fashion for this ordinance to address situations in Missoula, but wants to be able to scope out, take a look at it, look at it more holistically. And she also wanted to note that it is understanding that with Johnson being open, there are significant decreases in public complaints. This draft is a good start on an ordinance that addresses time, place, and manner restrictions, but being part of those conversations is a high value, and wants to make sure that there's plenty of collaboration and partnership with community stakeholders, and she is committed to working with staff and council on this ordinance. So just wanted to clarify that this Wednesday, we will not hear the urban camping ordinance. We will hit pause on that, continue that into early 2024, and on a parallel track, have the park, or the, I'm sorry, the park ordinance also heard at the same time, but will not be hearing those in the next five or six weeks at a minimum.
Can I just make a clarification real quick?
Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Jones mentioned that city council has been working on this ordinance, but I have not been consulted once about this ordinance, so city council has not been working on this ordinance, a few people have been. I just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you for that clarification. I will say that several city councillors have been working on it. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, and I trust the mayor-elect will hit the ground running a week from today, so I think this is wise to give her an opportunity to participate in this. And Ms. Raybain, I'll let you give us the amended committee schedule then with that in mind.
Will do. So we have a drastically changed committee schedule, so let me share it on screen, and I will post it in all of the usual places after tonight's council meeting. Can everyone see? I hope so. Looks like I can see on my screen. Okay. So committee meetings are being held this Wednesday, November 15th, and like I said, we have a, we have changes to all but one of the committee meetings from what we posted on Friday. So Budget and Finance Committee will meet on the 15th, this coming Wednesday, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:20, and they will be taking up an appointment to the Tourism Business Improvement District, as well as the Fiscal Year 2024 First Quarter Budget Amendments. The big change here is to Public Safety, Health, and Operations. That committee will now only be 10 minutes from 9:30 to 9:40 in the morning, taking up the Teamsters Local Number Two City Compost Collective Bargaining Agreement. Public Horse Mobility now is meeting in the morning. They'll meet from 9:50 to 11:10, taking up an appointment to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, a resolution to order right-of-way improvements over on Ivy and Franklin, from South Fourth Street to Woodford, and Klaus Property Acquisition, and the Transform Brooks Connect Midtown Presentation. The Climate Conservation and Parks Committee also moves to the morning, and they will be meeting from 11:20 to 11:40, taking up the Caris Park Maintenance Agreement. And finally, the last committee of the day will be the Housing Redevelopment and Committee, Community Programs Committee, meeting from 11:50 in the morning until 12:10 in the afternoon, taking up the City of Missoula's five-year consolidated and consolidated plan and equity plan for the U.S. Department of HUD and Urban Development Programs. And that is our committee schedule this week. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. Any additional changes to that committee schedule? Seeing none, that will stand as presented. We can now move on to our consent agenda. So items on the consent agenda, for those of you who are new to council meetings, were generally approved unanimously at the City Council Committee, so we take those, we save a little time on Mondays by taking all those items up as a package. Ms. Raybain, our city clerk will read the list aloud, and then we'll invite public comment before we vote. Ms. Raybain?
Thanks. We have 13 items on tonight's consent agenda. Let me share my screen, so those of you who are watching via computer or in the chambers can follow along and help me correct my homework if I get it wrong. The first item is to approve accounts payable for checks that are dated tomorrow, November 14th, 2023, and those bills total this week $1,287,362.56. Number two is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a four-year collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local Number Two and Operators Union Local Number 400 that represents the Streets Division, and this is, collective bargaining agreement is in the motion twice. Number three is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Jesse Dodson to the Missoula Urban Transportation District Board. Folks, you all know that is mountain line for a term that begins January 1st, 2024, and expires December 31st of 2027. Number four is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with WGM Group for consulting services on the California Street Surface Infrastructure Improvements Project, Dakota Street to River Road, at a cost not to exceed $84,947.85. Number five is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the revised urban transportation planning boundary map. Number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement with Morrison and Merrily for the Comprehensive Storm Water Quality Plan, at a cost not to exceed $204,200, with $125,000 coming from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, leaving the final city portion at $75,402. Number seven is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign award documents for a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Response Program, to continue enhancing and expanding Missoula's Crisis Intervention Team Program, otherwise known as our CIT program. Number eight is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to the, an amendment to the inter-local agreement for the administration of the Missoula Local Government Building Special District that was originally adopted in, excuse me, in Resolution 8648, to modify the number of people serving on the administrative body and to make other minor changes. Number nine is to set a public hearing to be held jointly with the Missoula County Commissioners on December 11th of 2023, to approve the Green Power Program Term Sheet. Number 10 is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kim Sawyer to the Tourism Business Improvement District for a term that begins December 1st, 2023, and expires on December 1st of 2027. Number 11 is to approve the mayor to authorize the mayor to sign the Fiscal Year 2024 Community Justice Department Agreement for Crime Victim Advocate and Healthy Relationship Services in the amount of $217,163. Number 12 is to set a public hearing on November 27th of 2023, on a resolution of the Missoula City Council amending Resolution 8713 as follows, amending the land use planning fee schedule by removing fees that are now included on a separate engineering fee schedule, removing reference to the former Design Review Board in response to state legislation, and it just, additional changes noted on Exhibit A of the resolution, and amending business licensing fee schedules is noted on Exhibit B of the resolution for services effective January 1st, 2024. Folks, we're setting a public hearing on that resolution tonight for the 27th of November. And finally, number 13 is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Claire Trumbull as the Legislative Services Director and City Clerk for the City of Missoula, effective January 1st, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. Is there any public comment on items on the consent agenda? Mr. Larson?
Hi, Ms. Larson, Ward Three. First is the claims on Page One. There's a police department's claim that's cited as non-departmental for $28,000 for police vehicle equipment. This is, again, a continued theme where we just non-departmentalize stuff that we just don't want to accumulate costs to, I guess. I think is an example of how we just have pots of money and rob Peter to pay Paul all the time in this city. I think that is extremely exemplified when we saw MRA donate a bunch of money into the budget after we raised the taxes by 9% here. I just, I don't get how this happens. It says police vehicle equipment, and it's non-departmental, and it's $28,000. It's no, it's no small sum. The police department is the largest department. Just wondering how that came to happen, whose error that was, and why that always continues to happen. Also wondering how we got that grant for the CIT so quickly, and why we didn't do that earlier, as opposed to trying to wrap that into the failed bond initiative. It's, yeah, I don't understand what's going on here when we can just apply for free money to fund our CIT initiatives and our mental health initiatives, which are desperately needed, but instead, we try and strap it to the taxpayer, and then the taxpayer freaks out, and then all of a sudden, there's a grant. It's, it's just kind of, it's kind of a continued theme, and we, taxpayers don't like it, the community doesn't like it, and so I guess it would be great if we could improve that, that behavior. I, I don't know why non-departmental stuff continues to come up, but I think it definitely has something to do with, I believe, the city not having a capital assets list. I don't think the city knows what it owns and what it doesn't own, but, you know, if they could prove me wrong by providing a capital assets list of what the city actually owns and what's being paid off by debt, what's not being paid off by debt, I think we'd kind of see and know what we're actually, what we actually have here, instead of, you know, just sending the taxpayer down the road of further debt. That's just me. What else?
You're at three minutes, Mr. Larson.
Oh, I'm at three minutes? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight on the consent agenda? Seeing no one in the room and no hands raised online, questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Ms. Raybain? If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Hey, on the consent agenda, Basara?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Katos?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
LaCica?
Yes.
And West?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your votes? That is 11 ayes and one abst.
And the consent agenda is approved. We have no comments from city staff or various city entities. We do have two special presentations in the form of proclamations. The first is in support of our small businesses as we enter the holiday season, whereas small businesses form the backbone of our local economy, generating jobs and improving the quality of life for citizens, and whereas the City of Missoula, Montana supports efforts of local businesses, local small businesses, and recognizes the critical role they play in our community, and whereas Small Business Saturday is a nationwide campaign to cultivate business for small merchants on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and whereas Small Business Saturday will stimulate economic growth locally for small merchants by following in the tradition of Black Friday and Cyber Monday, two of the busiest shopping days of the year, and whereas we encourage citizens to consider shopping small merchants on Small Business Saturday as a way to boost the local economy and strengthen our small business community. Now therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, in Missoula, Montana, as Small Business Saturday, and encourage our residents to recognize and support small businesses within our community by shopping these establishments on the Saturday following Thanksgiving. And I want to thank, that comes to us via a city staff member who is also a small business And second, whereas our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment of all first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, DOT crews, linemen, tow operators, and tow operators who conduct valuable and often lifesaving operations on the roadside. the commitment of all first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical personnel, DOT crews, linemen, tow operators, and tow operators who conduct valuable and often lifesaving operations on the roadside, and whereas these on-scene personnel provide a critical perspect, public service, and they're all, and they are called to duty all hours of the day and night in adverse weather conditions and in dangerous, and in a dangerous roadside environment, and whereas one loss of life is too many, be it the first responder or the motoring public, and all states have a slow down and move over law, and whereas the City of Missoula asks road users to do their part to keep everyone responding to traffic incidents in our, on our highways safe, following the slow down and move over law and driving safely, and whereas the week of November 13th through 17th is set aside to recognize our crash responders and keep them safe. Now therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, hereby recognize the week of November 13th through 17th, 2023 as Crash Responders Safety Week, and I want to thank the tow operators who brought that forth to raise awareness. We have no items for final consideration. We do have one public hearing tonight, and this is, this is a public forum. And so this is a peculiarity in zoning when government, a government entity is proposing a use or operating a use that deviates from our local zoning. This is the tool that we have within zoning to alert the council and the public and to make sure that, that everyone is aware of those uses. It's, this public hearing tonight is for the Johnson Street Emergency Shelter, and we will be running through that. We have John Sand here with our staff report, and we have Director Erin Payhan here as well. Mr. Sand?
Thank you, Mayor Hess. Let me get my screen shared. Thanks again, Mayor Hess. Good evening, council and the Missoula community. My name's John Sand. I'm a planner with Development Services, and it was just said this is an item, this item is a public forum for the Johnson Street Shelter. As with all public forums, there's no vote from city council, so there's no recommended motion from staff. However, council have the decision, will have decision items associated with the Johnson Street Shelter before you in the form of contracts and provider agreements. Those are just, those are the decision spaces U.S. Council have regarding this project. The project is located at the corner of Johnson Street and North Avenue West with the physical address of 1919 North Avenue. While the city on parcel extends to South Avenue West, the public forum is addressing the use of the building in the northwest corner, corner of the parcel outlined in yellow, which has been successfully run, run the past three years as an extreme weather shelter. The subject property is approximately a block west of the Bitterroot Branch commuter path and located near Mountain Line Route 2 Bolt Line. The subject parcel is owned M1-2 Limited Industrial, which Emergency Homeless Shelter is a permitted use in the zoning district. There are commercial uses across Johnson Street to the west and also to the north. Residential development exists to the west is across the railroad tracks to the east. The property is designated as community mixed use in the 2035 Armazula Growth Policy. Activities in this land use category are the basic employment and services necessary for vibrant community. Uses are intended to serve the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. The zoning of M1-2 Limited Industrial is not, not a current relatable zoning district in the growth policy, however, the, however, the proposed use does meet the intent of the land use designation. So as Mayor Hess mentioned, public forums are an opportunity for government agencies to propose a land use, which is contradictory to local zoning regulations, and we'll be going over those zoning regulations in future slides. Public hearing is required to allow for comment on this proposed use from both council and the community. Council does not have the power to deny or condition the request, and with the City of Missoula as the applicant, it is considered a government agency and is the current property. So proposed uses for this site, there are no proposed changes to the outside of the existing building. It'll be operated by the Pavarello Center. The proposal is for the operation of temporary year-round emergency homeless shelter in the building where previously the extreme weather shelter, shelter was operated. There are different Title 20 requirements for these different shelter uses, and these additional requirements in the zoning code are what initiated the public forum process. All right, so here we have a site plan. We have South Johnson Street to the west here, North Avenue West, North Avenue West to the north, and then over here to the east is where the Bitterroot Branch Trail would be. There are no proposed changes to the outside of the existing building. And then on this slide, I'd just like you to all note the area where the trees will be removed, and then the area where the shower trailers will be established, and those are related to zoning code, which again, I'll chat about here in a minute. So the city is deviating from two sections of Title 20, Section 2040045, Part A 3 and C1, recognizing that this is a similar use, which was the extreme weather shelter that has operated with success for the last three years. These sections of code will not be met because the site is within 300 feet of a residential district, and storage lockers will not be provided, provided. The Pavarello Center has an operational plan in place that addresses the lack of required storage lockers. The proposed accessory structures containing showers and bathrooms will deviate from Title 20, Section 204530, Part C, because they are within 10 feet of each other. The city is also deviating from street frontage landscaping standards in our landscaping section, as two trees will be removed for a new sewer connection. No new landscaping is proposed. And these are just the sections of code again that the city is deviating, again, the minimum distance from residential zones. The Pavarello Center has successfully operated in this location during winter months in the past. Storage lockers, the Pavarello Center has an operational plan in place to address the lack of required storage lockers. The street frontage landscaping, no proposed landscaping improvements as two trees will be removed for installation of new sewer connection. So that's all I have tonight. I'd also like to point out there's a number of folks who've been involved on this project who are present tonight as well, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sand. Ms. Payhan, anything else from you?
No, we're in the unique position here of being both the reviewer and the applicant, so I'm here to speak as the applicant, and I'm just happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you for that. With that, I will open the public hearing if anyone would like to comment tonight. Sir?
I probably just got a little bit lost in all the information, so the council doesn't have the ability to deny the project. Who initiated it? It was talk about the city and different government entities, but who exactly said, let's do this?
Yeah, so.
Curiosity question.
So we don't do a back and forth during the public comment, but if you have, if you have other questions, why don't you list them all, and then we can get them all answered at end of the record for you.
So list them.
Just go ahead and, any questions that you have, go ahead and, go ahead and, or any comments, and then we'll.
Well, another one was, who decides that the variances will be approved? And the big one for me is, is just to verify that this is a temporary variance. I was a code official for safety at one time, and I know that codes are important, and I know sometimes there's alternate methods of meeting the spirit of the code when it can't be exactly met, but I just want to make sure that, I think this is under a one-year contract right now, that this is a variance speaking for that same timeframe and not a permanent variance that we're, that is being decided, because I don't know if the public is aware of that or not.
Thanks. We'll, we'll complete our public comment, and then we'll get all those questions answered. Anyone else tonight with public comment on the public forum? Mr. Oswald?
Jeffrey Oswald. I live over by the Johnson Center, and as I said, I, I went down there last Sunday, a week ago yesterday, I guess it was, and this thing about the locker stolen out of the cubby holes, and that there was resistance to putting cameras on it, for some reason I can't figure, but, but I think that that's a real big failing and, and something that should be really considered is that, that's not something to, to skimp on as far as, as oversight from the city, because what the Pavarello Center has done thus far has been ineffective. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Mr. Dunlop?
Yes, Robert Dunlop. I went to the Johnson Street Shelter a couple of months ago when they had an open house, and I go by it quite often. There are many, many people there, and I would like to think that some of those people would like to have a job and better themselves, but the way that Johnson Street Center is set up now, it's almost impossible for them to do that because of the lack of shower facilities, the lack of being able to clean your clothes if you show up at a job interview. Being clean is part of the interview process. So I see in the description up there that you're hooking up some kind, taking out a couple of trees for sewer, sewer line, so I hope that there will be some kind of way for those people that do want to better themselves to be able to clean up themselves and to wash their clothes. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no comment tonight.
So I'm just reading the, the criteria for outs, which is where you're not allowed to come back into the Johnson Street Shelter, and the definition for weapons, which is basically anything. It says in the, the criteria that a magic wand could be defined as a weapon by staff. So.
So, so the question before the body is a land use decision as to whether or not this is an appropriate place for an emergency shelter. So we're not, there's no action on, on policies that the shelter uses, utilizes.
Right, so it's, 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 it's encompassing of this, this discussion topic. So I'm going to continue. Basically, anything that they can use as a weapon can be, like a magic wand can be considered a weapon. So what I'm asking you to consider is the, the outs here. They're pretty extreme. It, it says you can get a three-day out for requiring a 911 call. I think that that should, that should be stricken from this, this agreement. That deters people from calling the police when they need the police. And again, you should look at these outs. You should look at the, the, the criteria for, for throwing people out into the cold for one to, one to 12 hours, for 24 hours, and for up to three days, because some of them are pretty egregious. But I know that that might not necessarily affect anyone on this council, and I know that you guys are tired of talking about this and hearing this stuff, and you don't even really want to listen to any of this anyway. So, thank you.
Mr. Spitzbacher?
What I heard, what he said was that deceit of a management of that Pavarello, and I emphasized deceit. The advocacy program that's out here comes from this council and the other residents. The advocacy, when I first stepped into that Pavarello a year ago, I was going to do a survey on the advocacy. Several of the staff members are gone that were probably the most deceitful. We do have a change of the movement and so forth. If you look at somebody wrong and there, it's just like a disorderly conduct, they can throw you out. Disorderly conduct, if you fart the wrong way, you can be disorderly. If you look at somebody that wrongly could be disorderly, I'm speaking of something that's in Missoula that come from Salt Lake City. And as far as the Johnson seat proposal as a temporary shelter, it should be an ongoing shelter until some other means are equitably constructed. And if you want to know a city that constructed equitably shelter program, contact Gail Miller that has her name on one of the shelters in Salt Lake City. They had to bring it together because of the community, and the community come together really well. Gail Miller, one of the richest ones in Utah, got their name on a building for what they participated of changing. Do I support the Johnson Bill Shelter? Yes, until there's an other avenue to be addressed. As a temporary shower units, there should be something more better equitably, but they should be temporary and temporarily hooked up like you're going to be temporary, because that's not facility could be redesigned for other so far. And one other thing that I was going to mention regards to that facility is that slips my mind. I do fully support the temporary Johnson Shelter, and I do advocate the local community be watching circumstances that should be equitably dealt with over and above the management of the entire council and the Pavarello management. The local community should be advocating a personal involvement.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? All right, seeing no one in the room and no one online, I will close the public hearing and go first to questions from council members. We'll do questions and comments since there's no action tonight. I'm going to start, Ms. Payhan, can you walk through, let me get this one, and then I'll go to you, Ms. Vasika. So can you, can you walk through the gentleman's questions about who, about sort of the clunkiness of the public forum process and, and sort of the typical applicant review body relationship and, and what's different tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. Erin Payhan with Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. So we are, as I said, awkwardly serving as both the reviewer and the applicant because we own the Johnson Street facility. Municipalities or government entities, including Missoula County, the University of Montana, and Missoula County Public Schools, have this opportunity, this, this avenue available to them, called a public forum, through which they can come and present to city council and the broader community to outline deviations from code that they will be engaging, and those entities are not bound by zoning code as private entities are. In this instance, it is unique because this is a public forum, it is an information-only item, there isn't a vote associated with this, but to answer those questions about who approved this project and who approves these variances, council actually does have decision-making ability with this project, it just doesn't come at this exact juncture through the public forum. So city council approved this project when they approved the operational contract with the Pavarello Center several months ago that provided the funding that was required to establish the service in the Johnson Street facility. They'll have more decision points before them in the coming weeks as we bring a more comprehensive update on Johnson Street operations and some contracts that we hope to put in place to further our efforts around providing those improved bathroom and shower facilities so people can have access to those services, as mentioned in public comment, to help connect them with jobs and other resources in the community. And so there actually are various decision points before council on this project, they just don't come in the format of the public forum.
Thanks for that. Ms. Vasika?
Yeah, I can't quite remember the gentleman's other question about who, under what purview makes it to ensure that these, the funds that we are receiving are actually put to the proper use. Is that what his question was? I can't. Is that what his question was? I can't, I didn't write it down properly.
There's a question about, about who approves the land use action, I believe, and then also the variance. It's not actually a variance, but the, the extent of the approval. And I guess, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Payhan, I, it's not a variance. Do you want to speak to the specifics of the land use action?
Yeah, the purpose of the public forum is to essentially notify council and the public that the city is deviating from portions of the code as outlined by our case planner, John Sand. So with that specific, with that specific conversation, there isn't a decision point. The decision points in this project have come before council through other avenues, the financial contract with the Pavarello Center, and will continue to come before council through operational decisions.
Ms. Vaseka?
All right, just so I get the timeline correct, this is that public hearing that was discussed when I was asking all those questions during budget season, right after that. Okay, thank you.
Correct, yeah. Okay. Additional questions or comments? I'm going to make a comment that this, this is, this public forum process, and I say this at every public forum, is mandated by the state and it's really stupid, in my opinion. It is, it is a relic of antiquated state law as far as how land use decisions are made and with regard to, to government buildings. And typically, we see this when the university wants to deviate from the required amount of bike parking or something, something along those lines. The public forum is, as, as we've talked about, governments, local governments, county government, state government are not required to follow local zoning codes. But we are required to have this, this exercise where we, where we indicate how many shrubs the project is deficient to meet the zoning code. And I, and this is not a good, this is something that is, that should be a legislative priority as far as doing away with this public forum. It is, it takes a lot of time and it, it, there's no decision point. And so people have come before us today and it's a confusing item and it's, I just would continue to advocate for putting this on, on the list of things that you work on at the, at the legislature moving forward. This is different in that we approve the contract. And this is, one of the things that you all put in the contract, I think it was Ms. Jordan that suggested this, was, was a quarterly report from police. And so you'll see that in December, that PD will come and give information about their responses, about the directed patrols, about, about calls for service. And you'll see that in other areas where you'll get city staff providing updates about how things are going and the provider, the Pavarello Center providing updates on how things are going. So there's a lot of touchpoints for influencing this, this program. Approving the contract this, this summer was certainly the most major of those. But there will be opportunities along the way to, to course correct if we need to change anything. This is just not one of those opportunities tonight. So it's, it is clunky and, and required by state law and necessarily clunky by state law. Ms. Vaseka?
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify to folks in the audience, back when I was asking questions about the legality of the zoning of the emergency, of the Johnson Street Shelter, it was in violation of our own Missoula municipal code because it was, I believe, within 500 feet of a residentially zoned area. And then so it also was in violation of an extreme weather shelter. And then so because it's the government, we can violate our own zoning code as long as we have a public hearing and that is, this is that public hearing.
Any additional comments? All right, I'll, I'll take the same nomenclature issue that I took with you before, Ms. Vaseka, that it's not a violation. There is a process in the code by which we deviate from the code. And so it is in line with the code. It's just, it's just in line with a different, a different title of, or a different chapter of it. So, okay, I don't see any additional comments. Anything else from council members? Seeing none, we've had a public forum and we can move on to our next agenda item. This concludes our substantive business tonight. We have general comments from city council and myself. With your indulgence, I'm going to save my comments for last. And we'll start, we'll mix it up tonight and start on my right with Ms. Sherrill and we'll go down from there with general comments.
Just can't help but move it into your space. So anyone who's been on council knows that the last couple of years have been very challenging. Mayor Ingean was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in January of '22. He started chemo almost immediately. Between this and the cancer itself, he got very sick pretty quickly. I want to thank everyone, including those around this horseshoe and his leadership team that brought him meals as he was struggling and those that took shifts toward the end of his life in the times his partner Lucy couldn't be with him. This was hard in so many ways. Grief coupled with a vacuum of 16-plus years of leadership is no joke. It was confusing, difficult, and heartbreaking at the same time. I first want to thank Gwen Jones. She had barely started serving as council president when she was asked to step up and take on the duties of mayor during his illness and after his passing. The fact that she did this without missing a beat or without even one moment of hesitation or complaint should not go unnoticed. We all tried to support her, but she is the one that did it. So thank you. I don't think I've said thank you for that. I also want to thank staff for sticking in there through so much change. I know that you did this because of your commitment as civil servants. So thank you. And of course, because we can't let them go without thanking Jordan, I want to thank Jordan. I will never forget sitting in that brutally hot sun at that picnic table with you when you said you would be willing to put in for the mayoral appointment. To me, this immediately made sense as you had the most experience on council. Thank you for your willingness to step, step up at a difficult time and for your selfless service. Mayor Ingean used to regularly say that Jordan is usually the smartest person in the room and he would never let you know it. He was right and I appreciate that you never gloated about it. Your quiet intelligence, your humanity, your humility, your clear and thoughtful consideration of issues and your deep understanding of municipal government will be sorely missed. And as I said last time, I still plan on calling you quite a bit. I'll get a burner if I have to, if you start. And lastly, I want to thank everyone who ran for municipal office. Mayor and count, mayoring and counseling can be challenging and sometimes a thankless job. I believe we all do this because we care deeply about our community, whether we agree politically or not. Congratulations to everyone that won and thank you to those that did not.
Ms. Jordan?
Well, I did not prepare a speech. That was really lovely. Thank you, Amber. But Jordan, I just want to thank you on the record and publicly for your time in discussing issues that I know sometimes were probably a little tedious. But you were really supportive in helping me help constituents and I want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank you for being really supportive of me when I had some personal stuff going on and being very private and very professional and very supportive. And I'm going to miss you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Carolina? Ms. West?
I just want to say that I'm glad that you're still my neighbor. So I'll see you around.
That sounds great. Mr. Nugent?
Yeah, I definitely didn't prepare the speech. Ms. Sherrill did. But, you know, I would just say, thank you for all you've done for Missoula. And I know that the last year has been a journey for you and I and lots of other people. But I've appreciated your professionalism and your thoughtfulness. And, you know, I think a lot of people don't know what kind of goes on behind the scenes on a lot of this stuff. But I think that you've handled yourself with the utmost of professionalism and to me and to everybody else. And I just appreciate it and I just wish you good luck.
Thank you. Ms. Fermer?
Thanks. I will also add to my thanks to you, Jordan. You became mayor and shortly after I got on council and we were both drinking it out of the fire hose at the same time. And you are always very open to all my stupid questions and answering all of my woes. So I really appreciate that. And I, I think that you are the epitome of a public servant. You serve very graciously and calmly and that is not always easy to do. And I also look forward to seeing you and Nimby in our neighborhood and having dog walks.
Ms. Savage?
Yeah, Jordan, you're one of my favorite people and I have told everyone that. I also really appreciated when I came on council and truly had no idea what I was doing. You were very helpful to me and always gave me the like, hey, this is what, this is what's actually happening here. And I've always appreciated that. And I really love that you use words like nomenclature. I think that that is one of my favorite things about you is how smart you are. And, and I think that we're all going to miss you very much. I also have an unrelated comment. And I'll just read it. Mostly, it's, it's a little tough, but Missoula's creative community is mourning the loss of Amy Casio this week. She was a bright light. I had the good fortune of working with Amy on communications projects over the years, over the years. And she was not only the yes, we can voice in the room, but she was the yes, we can and it's going to be creative and beautiful and in the pursuit of deep good. U.S. women's soccer legend Abby Wambach wrote in her book, Wolf Pack, that among many things, people and women specifically should be for each other. Amy embodied this every day. She was for me. She was for you. She was for Montana's nonprofit community. And she was for the creative process. I will miss her and I will miss the good she did in the world. And I know I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Basara?
Thank you. I thanked you before. I thank you today. And I will continue to thank you for stepping into this position with humility, commitment, and dedication. You also got me to step into public office. So I will continue to call you for your wisdom and your thoughts on how to move Missoula forward. Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Kontos?
Wow. Jordan, it's, it has been fun getting to know you. You're not exactly one of these guys that just announces themselves when you go into a room. And I appreciate that. And I think listening to you, it was clear pretty quick how intelligent you are. And not just intelligent, but you have a concern for people. And I think that's what this job's all about, is not only doing your best, but really taking people into consideration and making the best decisions. I totally admire the way you stepped into the mayor's office. That was a smooth transition. I think that's why a lot of people voted for you, because that's exactly what happened. And I know you got a bright future ahead of you. If you are looking for employment, John's Carpet Care has an opening. And, you know, we've got good hours. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Ms. Jones?
Oh, my goodness. First of all, thank you for the kind words, Amber. Appreciate that. And Jordan, so much to say. You are kind and thoughtful, intelligent, hardworking, just wonderful traits to bring to this job. And I've appreciated that over the years. You also have a very giving heart. And I think that's why you are the wonderful person that you are. I know that you're going on to different things at this point. But I know that you are truly a public servant underneath it all. So I've said this before at another event and I'll say it again. At some point, you're going to circle back to public service in some form or capacity. Honestly, getting elected is a very strange way to get a job. Maybe you can just work in public service and not be elected and probably a far better situation. But what you will bring to the table after 10 years of being unelected and serving in these, this capacity will be an amazing gift to whatever entity you wind up working for in the long run. So I know you'll make our world a better place and I'm glad you're in it. And thank you for all that you have done for Missoula.
Thank you. Ms. Vaseka?
First of all, if I'm not mistaken, I wanted to remind folks that we don't have council next week. So if you show up here, we won't be here. And then I also, Jordan, you and I disagree on a lot. I've always been, it's always been great to have those discussions with you and you've always been willing to try and most, most often did succeed to see things from my point of view and I, to yours. And even though we were able to see things from another perspective, we, we were able to discuss it and still have our own opinions regarding it. And I really appreciated those conversations with you. And if you ever want to see things from a different perspective, feel free to call me.
Well, thank you all. You know, for, for those of you who don't come to council meetings regularly, we don't usually do this. So. And I had kind of, you know, this is also an unusual time for a transition. And I had kind of hoped that, and not, not a lot of people know that the mayoral transition is occurring a week from today. And I'd kind of hoped that I could sneak out without anyone noticing, but I wasn't, I wasn't so lucky. But I am grateful for all the kind words and grateful for the friendships and grateful for everything that I've learned from, from all of you. And I think I'll look back on 10 years in local government and just continue to be wowed by the things that City of Missoula can do and the things that we do on a regular basis. We aren't a great place by accident. And that's, that's because there's a lot of people in this community who care a hell of a lot and who work really hard to make sure that Missoula remains a place that cares about people and cares about place, a place that invests in itself and its future. And I think that's the role of local government all day long. And I think that that's something that we have done for decades now at the City of Missoula. And we're better for it. There's a quote, I'm not sure who it's attributable to. It's some tech leader in the mid-century, I believe. But it, but he said that you often overestimate what you can accomplish in a year and underestimate what you can accomplish in 10 years. And there's a lot of stuff over the last year that I, that we didn't get done. And a lot of stuff that I hope you all will keep working on. I trust you will. And a lot of unfinished ends, a lot of loose ends over that last year. But looking back over the last 10 years, it's really pretty incredible and pretty remarkable what, what we've been able to accomplish. We didn't own our water system 10 years ago. And the water system was transitioned, was sold to a hostile multinational hedge firm, hedge fund. And under the leadership of Mayor Ingean, we now own our water system. And that matters today and it matters tomorrow, but it really matters 200 years from now when water, we don't know what the water in the west will be like, but we know it's going to be less plentiful. And the last thing we need is a multinational hedge fund bottling our water and selling it for profit instead of keeping it in our community for the benefit of the residents that we serve. We, 10 years ago, didn't have Fort Missoula Regional Park, which is a $42 million gem of a park that draws people from around the region and from around our community. It provides a variety of recreational amenities and cultural amenities through the, through the field of bitter roots and through some of the interpretive elements of that project. We had a much smaller open space system. We didn't own Mountain Stone. We didn't own some of the, the Cullenditch land down by, down by the Clark Fork River. We didn't own Marshall Mountain. We still don't, but we will really soon. We had a sort of ho-hum wastewater treatment plant. And I think that's probably what most people think of wastewater is that it's just kind of fine. It happens out of sight, out of mind. But the 8 million gallons of water that, of effluent that come out of that plant are not just directly discharged into the river. They are used to directly irrigate a poplar tree plantation where there's nutrient uptake and we're preventing algae blooms in the river. And we're flaring off extra methane at the plant and capturing that for heat. And we have the largest non-export solar array in the state of Montana. And that's an innovative plant that does really great stuff. And takes what is a waste product product, um, the ultimate waste product and turns it into a resource to grow trees and to provide electricity and to provide heat and to make compost. And speaking of compost, we didn't have a publicly owned compost plant 10 years ago. We had a stinky, outdated plant that caused a lot of complaints in Ward Six. And, um, now it is a state of the art compost plant that, um, takes, uh, a ton of bio-waste, you know, things that would be waste from around the community and turn them into something that's not waste. We didn't have a housing policy or a housing plan or a housing office or an affordable housing trust fund 10 years ago, and we do now. And we have, um, we are leaders in that space in a way that, um, you know, our housing, our housing is out of control. Um, it is, um, it is, um, unaffordable. It is, uh, continues to be challenging. However, if we look at any desirable community around the Mountain West and we look at how much better off we are than, than other communities around the Mountain West, it is because of that work that we did on housing. And we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of work to do, but we've done a lot of work. And we wouldn't be anywhere near where we are now if it weren't for Ms. Payhan and her team and all of the work that we're doing around housing. Uh, we have now the John Ingean Local Government Building, which is a beautiful facility on the edge of downtown that is going to be the seat of government for decades to come. And, uh, we've been working on that for about a decade. That's been vacant for about a decade now. We have a top-notch police department and a top-notch fire department and a top-notch mobile support team. And, um, the folks in those departments are, um, innovating and leading and are doing fantastic work and really, um, uh, are, we owe them a great debt of gratitude for, for the work that they do. And, um, grateful for, um, for those fine folks. And I didn't really prepare anything, so I'm, I'm losing track of things here. But, and, and, and the other piece of this is that we have a great council and a great staff. We have, um, 831 staff, I believe, at, at the moment. And those staff show up every day and they do their best every day to make our community a little bit better. And when you have 831 people who are all trying to make a difference, um, turns out you make a difference. And so without those, without those staff, um, we, we wouldn't have been able to do any of this. We also have a really supportive and incredible community. Um, so I appreciate the thanks. The reality is that I couldn't have done any of it without all of you. Thank you all. We have no further business. Um, we do have our administratively approved agreements report and that is, uh, available for your reading and, um, we'll be adjourned. Thank you all for your service.